All right, we're about fifteen seconds early, but I'm going to call us to order. Ask everyone to please stand. And Commissioner Hudson, would you please read us the pledge of allegiance?
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are at approval of the minutes for January seventeenth. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from January seventeenth. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I have a minor correction. Let's see. Approval of manual checks. I can't see through the third or fourth page. The amount does not, in the table, does not agree with the amount in the motion. And so I believe the motion needs to be changed. It's the one for one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents in the motion, so one hundred and sixty thousand, five forty-three, forty. And that actually goes to the next item, so that can be corrected.
All right, okay. Is that it, Jane? Okay, so Jessica got that, so we'll make those changes. And so with those changes, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of purchase orders?
I'll move approval of purchase orders in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the purchase orders from January thirty-first, one seventeen eight ninety seventy. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Approval of accounts payable for January twenty-fourth.
Approval of accounts payable, January twenty-fourth, 2019, total amount, four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of accounts payable for January thirty-first?
I'll move accounts payable for January thirty-first in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And manual checks, January twenty-fifth?
I'll move approval of manual checks, January twenty-fifth, 2019, total amount, five thousand three hundred dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And manual checks for February first?
I move manual checks for February first in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second, is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And we're down to approval of payroll for January twenty-fourth. I'll move approval of payroll for January twenty-fourth in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one dollar and seventy-four cents. Second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Announcements, Stephanie?
I do have a few announcements. The first one is Mr. Lutz, who had previously requested an agenda appointment because he would not be available during budget, has been able to work out a time to appear during budget, so he will not be coming for his appointment today.
So that's number three. We will take number three off of the agenda.
Yes.
And I have a little change I would like to make. Items number six and seven, that is the discussion surrounding the Jefferson County Development Authority. And I would like to suggest, we'll discuss it later, because I don't want to take up the time to do it right now, but I would like to consider holding a special meeting for all things JCDAs related, including the process for that selection, as well as the reconstituting the board and discuss interviews as well. So I would like to do that, but I'll wait till later in the meeting to have that discussion, because I don't want to take the time to do it now. We are going to do something a little bit different this morning. We have a busy agenda. We have to be at the courthouse by one-thirty in order to conduct board of review and equalization. So I'm going to take as many comments as I can between nine forty, well, starting immediately, between nine forty and ten a.m. Then we're going to deal with the rest of the agenda. At the foot of the agenda, if there's time left, we'll resume public comments so that everyone has a chance to speak. And we will recess at twelve fifteen, or as close there to as we can possibly do that, since we have a day.
I do, I will try not to cut into the public comment time, but I do want to mention the Wi-Fi, because we had an issue.
Yes, yes.
So I talked to our IT person, who was nice enough to write this up. So what I'm about to tell you, I don't understand, but he does. So Wi-Fi networks operate on one of several channels, which are different ranges of frequencies that the wireless network can operate on. If you have multiple Wi-Fi networks near each other, they can cause interference. The commission meeting room was initially set up for the commission audio slash visual system and county Wi-Fi by having a spectrum analysis done so as to assign uncongested channels to these devices to limit and/or eliminate interference. Citizens and guests in the commission meetings operating their own Wi-Fi hotspots via their cellphones may cause interference that impacts both the commission audiovisual system and the recordings of the commission meetings, causing possible loss of what was said during the meetings. So we're respectfully asking that all attendees to commission meetings turn off their Wi-Fi hotspots during the meetings. And just for your information, the commission doesn't see the Wi-Fi hotspots. The only person who really is inconvenienced by it is probably the most important person in the room, and also the lowest paid. So the inconvenience that it's causing is to her, and not really to anyone else. So I just wanted to let you know that. So we would ask for your cooperation in turning off those Wi-Fi hotspots when you're in the meeting room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to public comment, and I have a list of ten people here. We'll start with Tim Ross. And everyone will get their three minutes. Jessica will set the timer. We ask that you please observe the three-minute timeframe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great to be back. Yeah, I just want, I'm really glad to see that the, you know, the last meeting, I asked that we have Nick come and explain what's going on with the JCDAs. I understand he's going to be talking about the mission, but what I'm really interested in is what's been going on over there, okay? I was at the TEMA permit hearing last night, and, you know, the owner of that permit is the JCDAs. The contact person is administrative assistant at the JCDAs. So I'm just wondering, what exactly is the JCDAs? Is it Nick? Is it this board? What's been going on? We know JUI is out installing a water line. Around seventy thousand dollars of those plans were paid for by the JCDAs. So technically, they own part of those plans, right? Are, have they been getting reimbursed for the money that they paid for that? So I'd be interested in knowing, not just the mission, but what money is being spent? What's it being spent for? And what's going on? Because we don't really have a JCDAs, but it seems like there's a lot of stuff going on, and I don't understand by whose authority, how much money that is being indebted or spent, or for what. So maybe you all know that, but I'd like to see a really good breakdown of what exactly is going on? What exactly is the JCDAs? Okay? So anyway, I look forward to hearing his briefing. You're going to hear some good information about the health risk that Rockwell poses and some people coming up, and I hope you can consider it. And it was last August, or maybe it was a previous lifetime, I don't know, it kind of gets mixed up to me lately, but Ms. Buckle spoke, asking the commission to commit an act of courage and come out against Rockwell. So if anybody knows what courage is, you know, her father sure was an example of it. So I continue to echo from what was said months ago. We've seen what Rockwell's done, saying, well, forget the health assessment, we're just going to do our own, kind of leaving the school board in the lurch. So I think the time is coming for the different organizations here, they're going to say, yep, we're for it, we're against it, we're going to take some action, we're going to commit an act of courage. So, thank you very much.
Next is Iain Lusplust. Sorry.
Thank you, Stephanie. Everybody gets it wrong all the time. So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Whoops. I wanted to talk about the mission of the JCDAs. According to the website, "The ultimate goal of the Jefferson County Development Authority is to improve the quality of life for all Jefferson County residents by developing and promoting exclusive commercial opportunities for new and expanding businesses." I'll skip a little bit. "The JCDAs works to attract and support eastern panhandle entrepreneurs to create new businesses, job opportunities, and investments in the county. We work with existing businesses to solve problems and expand operations, helping prove the fact that West Virginia is one of the top states for business in the country." Improve the quality of life. Whether you accept it or not, we are facing unprecedented challenges because of climate change. We have to think outside the traditional economic development box. Business as usual will not work in the face of the challenges that we face. There is no argument among reputable scientists about climate change. It's here, it's bad, and we need to adapt to it now. What better way to improve the quality of life for all Jefferson County residents than to grapple with these significant challenges, working to attract businesses that will not do further harm to our environment, but those that will help us create a resilient local economy? One that positions Jefferson County to adapt to the coming challenges? I would urge you to instruct the JCDAs to work more closely with our local agricultural, equine, and tourism industries. I've said it before, but our farmers want businesses like food aggregators and a commercial kitchen, small cannery available to them. We just talked before the meeting about meat lockers and a slaughterhouse in Jefferson County. What is the JCDAs doing to help our local farmers and agricultural businesses? Those businesses support our equine industry with its thousands of jobs. And as we face the impact of climate change, a secure local food supply will be key to resilience. We need to make progress towards a largely local food supply, and we have the ability, the farms and the land, to do that right here. So I urge everyone to wake up, be imaginative, stop business as usual. If we, as a community, don't, as we are failing our children and future generations. Thank you.
Jay Mansfield?
My name is Jay Mansfield. I'm from Shepherdstown. I'm going to read a little statement later on from a doctor about the health problems with Rockwell. But I call upon you to initialize a formal public dialogue and champion a meeting between the town councils of Charleston, Harpers Ferry, and Shepherdstown, because they've written letters in opposition to Rockwell, and I'd like you to meet with them and find out how you can support their concerns, and how you can oppose Rockwell also as a superbody. And find out how you can support this county instead of assaulting it through the tacitly supporting the JCDAs. This is a binary choice. You're either with your community, or you're against it. Here's the letter. Dear Ms. Christina Mabe Stork, I'm Jerome A. Paulson, M.D., from the Fellowship of American Academy of Physicians. I'm pediatric consultant to the Mid-Atlantic Center for Children's Health and Environment, also known as MACCHE. MACCHE is a pediatric environmental health specialty unit that serves West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, and District of Columbia. Your inquiry has been referred to us by Dr. Susan Buchanan of P E H S U, serving the Great Lakes area, the Great Lakes Center for Children's Environmental Health. I understand that you're concerned about the development of an industrial facility near the local elementary school that will use coal as the source of power. You've told us that the plant is expected to use eighty-four to ninety tons of coal per day and release one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five tons carbon dioxide equivalent per year, two hundred and thirty-eight point nine-six tons nitrogen oxide per year, one hundred and forty-seven point four-five tons sulfur dioxide per year, sixty-seven point seven tons of formaldehyde per year, several hundred tons of atmospheric particulate matter per year, as well as various volatile organic compounds. You also indicated that the plant will employ two, two-hundred-and-thirteen-foot tall smokestacks. While the information that you've provided is not sufficient to perform a full environmental impact assessments, I agree, there is a reason for concern. Some of the local impact will be decreased by the tall smokestacks. While not preventing the production of the pollutants, they will disperse some of them far downwind from the local community and comprise the health, compromise the health of the populations downwind. One of my colleagues at MACCHE has developed some maps of your local area. They gave us the maps. The first map indicates that there are several elementary, middle, and high schools within five-mile radius of the Rockwell factory site. In addition, there are many churches and childcare centers within five miles of the factory. The second map adds in potential farmland. We do not have information about what that land is actually used for, but we would be concerned about contamination of the land itself, or contamination of crops grown for human or animal consumption. I certainly agree that the increase in the pollutants in the local atmosphere will present health threats, not only to the children in the elementary school, but to the community as a whole. That said, it is important to recognize that given the physiologic, anatomic, and behavioral differences.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary Ellen Ross?
Mary Ellen Ross, I am a resident of Jefferson County, and I will finish this letter. Children are often at greater risk of adverse health impacts of pollutants than our adults. Some of the concerns that I have are as follows. This is not meant as a complete list of toxic chemicals that may be released by the factory. Overall air pollution, it is well documented that children growing up in areas with greater amounts of air pollution are likely to show decreased lung function as young adults relative to children growing up in areas of less pollution. There is increasing evidence that the air pollution is neurotoxic to children in utero and to young children. Particulate air pollution. Particulate pollution can certainly exacerbate asthma in both children and adults, and adults' exposure to particulate pollution is associated with increased risk of heart attack and stroke. There is an increasing evidence to, evidence that particulate air pollution is neurotoxic to children in utero and to young children. Oxides of nitrogen and sulfur, both oxides of nitrogen and oxides of sulfur forms acid in the presence of moisture in the air. These acids can irritate the eyes and nose. More importantly, when inhaled, these acids irritate the lining of the bronchia and precipitate asthma attacks. There is an increasing evidence that oxides of nitrogen are neurotoxic to children in utero and to young children. Mercury. The burning of coal releases mercury. Because mercury is relatively heavy, it precipitates out of the atmosphere relatively close to its source. If there are rivers and lakes nearby, that mercury is converted to methyl mercury and is incorporated into the tissue of fish. If those fish are caught and eaten, the mercury is toxic to the brain. This is particularly worrisome for children in utero, women who are pregnant, and young children. Formaldehyde. Formaldehyde rapidly disperses and breaks down in the air. If there are high formaldehyde levels within the factory, the primary risk is to the workers. Formaldehyde can increase the risk of asthma, and most importantly, is a known human carcinogen. Again, the risk of cancer would be primarily observed in workers exposed to high levels of formaldehyde. Carbon dioxide. While the carbon dioxide may not present an immediate health risk to local children or adults, it certainly contributes to worsening of the climate change on a global scale. We are seeing increased severe weather events as a result of climate change. Climate change is causing changes in infectious disease patterns. It has increased the length and severity of the allergy season, as well as increasing other health risks. Ozon. The factory will release ozons and chemicals which promote formation of ozone in the atmosphere.
Thank you. Next to speak is Aline Schelling. Oh, Nancy. Yep, you're right. Yep, got it. Nancy Gregory.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to finish, I'm going to finish this letter at the last minute. Ozon is hazardous to all people and presents special risks to people with asthma or other lung diseases, older adults, people of all ages who exercise or work hard outside, and babies and children. Ozon irritates the mucous membranes of all people and can cause asthma attacks in those who are predisposed. Phenol is another chemical that can irritate the mucous membranes in the lungs. In animals, long-term repeated exposures to phenol in the air can cause more serious health problems, including neurologic, cardiac, pulmonary, and liver damage. I agree with you that it is not prudent to build this plant so close to an elementary school. You may use this letter as you see fit, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so I found this article the other day, "Three Lessons from Denmark for Investing in People and Places." And it is by Stephanie Giddiby from the National Resources Defense Council. And she says that Copenhagen is the most livable city. It has equal access to transportation, green space, playgrounds, affordable housing. People's well-being is at the center of this urban development. Does that sound familiar? The Jefferson site, original plan, the Jefferson Orchard site. At the end of the article, she writes, everyone, it's a great article. She writes, "Everyone has the right to breathe clean air, drink clean water. Where you live shouldn't determine how long you live. My lesson from Copenhagen," she writes. "Let's invest in what really matters, people, and let's start by ensuring the places in which we live, learn, play, and engage with others foster better health for all." While Denmark is phasing out fossil fuels, these Rockwell Danes are exporting its pollution and greenwashing its product. The company has the resources to fund expensive public relations campaigns of distortion, while our resources, the opposition, limit our ability to counter the propaganda. The company is violating its national values by bringing its company into Jefferson County. They are investing in people and places. Their people and places, not ours. Thank you.
Aline Schelling. Good morning.
And I'm Eileen Schelling.
Eileen. My grandmother's name was Eileen, but she spelled it differently, so.
I realize that that is being removed from today's agenda, but I would like to go ahead. Looking at the minutes for this meeting, it appears that the county commission is seriously looking at reconstituting the Jefferson County Development Authority Board of Directors. I would like you, the county commission, to inform us why this is being considered. My concern is that the reason for disbandment is that the JCDAs, as it currently stands, and placing roadblocks to those seeking to serve on this board, are actually, who are actually willing to try to fulfill the stated goal of improving the quality of life of all Jefferson County residents. Prove to me it isn't so. I do acknowledge that the actual quote on the JCDAs website is that its ultimate goal is to improve the quality of life for all Jefferson County residents by developing and promoting exclusive commercial opportunities for new and expanding businesses. Commerce is not defined solely by heavy industry. Indeed, heavy industry does not add to the quality of life of any living thing in its vicinity. Air and water pollution directly affect the health, whether it is in the short term with asthma attacks, which, in case you did not know, can kill my husband almost twice, and in the long term, increase the incidence of strokes, heart attack, and cancer. Heavy industry purports to be clean. There is plenty of evidence it is not. Any future commerce invited to this county should not be in the form of heavy industry, and the JCC should not cherry pick applicants who oppose the majority of the people of this county. In the words of the well-known environmental extremist Winston Churchill, "Healthy citizens are the greatest asset of any country, and I might add, county, can have." Thanks.
Ruth Hatcher?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. I was in Martinsburg yesterday, and I happened to see the plume coming out of the, I think it's the Seamid factory up there. And you can see, because of the cold weather, the plume is going sideways. The air does not go up. So basically, if Rockwell comes in, you're going to be fumigating our children in cold weather. And also in the rain, also in the snow, also, I guess, I'm not a scientist, but I can clearly see that is going sideways, and that is fumigating. So just to show you a picture of what's going to happen, these are not words, here's a picture. I think pictures are much more descriptive to people. So are you okay, each one of you, with those toxic emissions going around our children? Because that's really the bottom question. Are you okay with this? I'd like to know, yes or no? That's the answer. Also, people living near places like this, they're called the sacrifice zones for a reason, because they're going to, they're going to get sacrificed. And the pilot agreement mentions health and happiness. This does not look like health and happiness to me. It looks like pain and suffering, and the healthcare costs down the road will be instrumentally high. And air pollution and autism in Denmark, this is a study that just came out last month from Denmark. Guess what? There's a correlation between air pollution and autism in Denmark. Wow, what a surprise. This is a year ago, 2018. Particulate pollution is killing off thousands in Denmark each year. A new report from University of Copenhagen. How do you like that? And it gets even better. July 2017, statement by Denmark, "Transboundary air pollution is a problem that affects all of us and has great socioeconomic consequences." Gee whiz, wow. So they've studied all of this, and they know. So they know what they're doing to us, full and well, in their, in their words. So you need, and then, clean water laws are neglected at a cost in suffering. And this is a picture of a seven-year-old in Charleston. They had, his enamel was worn away from his teeth, so they had to put caps on it. This is in 2009 in Charleston, because of the chemicals in the water. So if this is, and the enamel's being worn off his teeth, what do you think it's doing to the inside of his body? We do not want our air and water polluted, because that's what's going to happen. And this is disgusting, absolutely disgusting. And also, just read information, it's called Toxic Water Series by New York Times Magazine. It's quite revealing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Will. This is probably the last speaker that we'll be able to.
That's good. Mine's short and sweet, because others have said what I've had to say. And of course, everybody knows I'm Sharon Will, and I'm here almost every time you convene. And I'm here today regarding the possible removal of the current members of the JCDAs. I realize that you may take that off the agenda, but this will fall into place when you do. Current members of the JCDAs should not be removed. The ones that resigned should not be able to reapply for at least one term. Ms. Nolan, you've stated you're bold in your statements, in your questions. Well, today I may be a little bold as well, as a little snarky. And I must ask, will you be removing yourself? No one's been more outspoken on this than what you have. I too have been, I've stated my personal feelings of living across the street from a proposed heavy industrial park. Does this affect my abilities to make good, sound decisions of the future growth of Jefferson County? No, it does not. I sat here and I took those questions. I answered them truthfully. I know the vision. So Ms. Nolan, when you do get to appointing the new JCDAs, please remove yourself due to your very outspoken newspaper front-page-worthy comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more people on the list, but we are going to move forward with the agenda. We'll get back to these two people after we have completed the business that the county has to conduct this morning. So the next item on the agenda is Sheriff Pete Dougherty.
Morning, members of the commission. I will help keep you on your stated goal of going quickly. As you recall, earlier this year, earlier last year, I had come before you requesting your approval of a grant request for a resource officer at Jefferson High School. That process went forward, and although we had expected that would be approved, it was not approved, mostly because, as we understand, the state failed to report some of its information to the feds. Nonetheless, as you know, we're relentless at trying to go after grant funding, so we slipped into another category of justice assistance. so we slipped into another category of justice assistance grant. And I'm here today to ask your approval to approve the grant for $15,000 for that.
I move to approve the commission president to sign the final JAG grant contract for year 19.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
I just have a question. Is that just offsets part of that salary? Or is that?
Yes, this, the school board is putting $20,000 into it, and this grant will put 15,000 into it. And next year, we have the plan that we have for budget season. Between the board and the grant, we'll provide 50,000.
Sounds awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't think we voted.
No, you didn't.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Okay. We're a little ahead, so we're going to move down the list. And Stephanie, do you have legislative updates for us today?
I don't. There was a bill that was going to cut our share of the 911 fee. It was a governor's bill, but they have decided to study that before they actually do. It would have resulted in an 11% reduction.
Yeah.
So, but that is off the table now. So I don't have anything else right now.
Yeah, and I real honestly haven't had a chance to review all of the legislative updates for the county. I think they've been kind of bogged down, down there as usual, but so.
As usual.
Yeah, as usual. Okay, we'll go on to item number 11, Recommendation from Jefferson County Homeland Security and Emergency Management Steering Committee for Appointments, Reappointments to the Steering Committee. And that's item number 10 on the agenda, for those who are following along.
So these are the people, and these people are currently serving. They want to be reappointed, and they're, I believe, representing certain, sorry, my, they represent certain sectors of the community that are required by the code section. One of them is the sheriff.
So we just need to approve them, or is that just?
Yeah, you just need to approve them.
Okay. All right. Entertained a motion to approve the recommendations for the Steering Committee for Appointments and Reappointments to the Homeland Security Emergency Management Steering Committee.
I'll do it. I move to approve the recommendation of the JCHSEM Steering Committee for the appointments of the following people to serve on the JCHSEM Steering Committee per their letter dated January 25, 2019, for a term of two years beginning January 31, 2019. Pete Daughtry, Sheriff, representing law enforcement. Kelly Parsons, Nicholas Dehaven Associates, representing the private sector. Evan Workman, American Red Cross, replaces Claire Brendel, representative of community organizations. Holly Morgan Fry, Shepherd University, representing education. Mason Carter, Jefferson County Engineering Department, and Jane Tab, County Commission Representative.
All right. Is there a second to the motion to approve that list?
Second.
All right. Discussion, hearing not.
I would just ask, I assume these people are, is there an advertising required or anything?
No. I mean, none of our appointments are required to be advertised. We do have a policy for the statutory boards, where we created a policy that we would advertise, but these are ones that we do not advertise.
And you say they want to be reappointed. How do, is that just the board itself telling us that?
It's Steve Allen, and they had, they all submitted letters saying they wanted to be reappointed. And some of them are required, like, for example, the Red Cross. We need a law enforcement representative. We need a representative from planning, zoning, and engineering. So Steve Allen has contacted all of these people. That's who they work with, emergency management. And they have all said that they want to be appointed. And the reason for the change in the Red Cross is because there's a different individual working with the local Red Cross now. But those are all required positions.
Yeah, and the Steering Committee had a, had a meeting after the quarterly meeting last Friday and agreed to this. So, you know, if there's other people interested, we sure, we have lots of committees they can work on. So we'd be glad to have them join the effort, because we have a lot of committees under the Homeland, the Homeland Agency, so.
Anything else? All right. So we'll vote now on the selection, on the Steering Committee. All in favor of approving the Steering Committee as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Down to number 12 now. The signature of letter acknowledging the harm reduction program operating from the Health Department, Jefferson County Health Department.
If you recall, and it's been a while, our health officer, Dr. Didden, came to talk to you about the harm reduction program. And now he needs a letter. I think he's going to apply for a grant, so he needs a letter indicating that the care of this program that is going to be operated by the Health Department. And he requested that Commissioner Nolan signed it as president of the county commission, but I felt like it needed to go on the agenda so that the rest of the commission was aware that this letter was being sent out. And just kind of refresh your memory about the harm reduction program that he presented. It's been, it's been several months now. But they are moving forward that program, and they're looking for funding. So the motion, I think we have the motion here, should be to authorize the president to sign the letter of support for the harm reduction program.
And I'll make that motion to authorize myself to sign the letter acknowledging the harm reduction program operating from the Health Department.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're, um, there it is. So we'll go back to the, well, I think we still have time, though, to go to county administrator reports.
So with the closing of the Jefferson County PSD's assets, that was completed on December 27, 2018. The commission is now entitled to appoint both a liaison and a board, and nominate three people for the city of Charleston to appoint one as a voting member of the board. The liaison is non-voting, and it's kind of like the county commission liaison was to the PSD. They can sit and participate in discussions of the open portions of the meeting, but they're not permitted in executive session. And really, the purpose is to come back and report to the county commission about what that board is doing. And then you're entitled to nominate three candidates. And the city council will choose one of those to appoint to the utility board. If they don't like any of your three candidates, they can not appoint any of them and ask you to pick three more, and the process can keep on going until you nominate someone that they like. So that is the process as outlined. And I think my suggestion would be that the liaison would be a county commissioner. But then you have to determine how you're going to go about nominating those three citizen positions. You can do it, we have a policy that we made and advertise for people. You can do it, you can just nominate people and vote to send them on to the board. It's up to you. It's, there's really no statutory guidance on how these members should be appointed.
Shouldn't they, well, in my viewpoint, maybe it's not in the legislation, but, or the agreement, but shouldn't whoever we report, appoint, be a former PSD customer?
Yes, that is a requirement. I apologize.
Not in municipality. I think it's not in the municipality. I think that has to be outside the municipality.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think that that is a requirement, but it is a requirement that they be a former ratepayer of the PSD.
Here's the thing, too. We need, for the liaison, it's three people they choose from. And personally, I like to see a regular citizen be that. I don't necessarily think we have to have a county commissioner as long as that individual can report back to us. I don't think it has to be a county commissioner that sits as the voting member.
No, you're not. Non-voting.
Yeah, it's a non-voting member. The liaison is a non-voting member.
Liaison is a non-voting member.
I mean, sorry, I said that wrong. The representative that is the voting member.
That's right, yes.
And that should be a citizen.
So the three people.
Both could be a citizen, essentially, if you wanted to, I think.
Well, I think Josh would be really good as a county commission liaison.
What time do they meet is my problem.
Yeah, they meet during the day.
What time, what day of the week?
They do.
Yeah, they do. It's like four o'clock, I think, yeah.
I mean, that might be fine. Let me double-check on that time on a Tuesday. Those days are kind of nasty for me for some reason, early in the week. But if it's fine, I'm more than happy to sit on it, so.
So check on that, maybe.
Yeah, I'll report back next meeting, for sure. But otherwise, I'm happy to sit on it, unless someone else wants it.
Oh, no, you can have it. You've seen this through this far.
For the voting member, I'd like to advertise.
Yes.
I already, written a lawsuit, I want another one.
Yeah, I think we need to advertise for the representative that is a former PSD ratepayer outside of the municipality.
Absolutely.
Make sure that's bold.
Right, I know. It'll be curious how we figure that one out, or how the ratepayer figures that out sometimes.
Was that a motion?
So usually, if, I'm sorry. If there is a requirement, jurisdictional requirement like that, we'll check either with the assessor or GIS to determine if they're actually eligible according to the criteria. So if we have someone apply who is from inside the city limits, we'll tell them that they're not eligible, because the commission wants someone outside the city limits.
I'll make it official. I move that we advertise for a representative to the Charleston Utility Board. And the requirements are that they are former PSD ratepayers outside of the municipality.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I just want to say that I don't think that's enough people to represent all the people in the county. We have one representative on that board. The county commission at the time approved it. They thought it was a good idea, but there aren't enough representatives for, for county residents to, on that, to, on that board. You know, it's a one vote out of five. So to me, it's not, it's not, it's not, I don't think that's a fair representation of our county residents.
It's not weighted per population of the entire county.
Well, one vote's better than zero when they previously had zero, so.
Can I add that I agree with you, Patsy. Their argument was it had something to do with the contract, or?
Oh, the bonds.
The bond.
Yeah.
But I think we should keep looking at it eventually. Those rules and regulations change all the time in Charleston, and I think we should pursue to at least have one more member on it at some point.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to work toward that, too.
I think you ought to look at the distribution of customers as well, because Charleston Utility Board, which was previously nominated exclusively by Charleston City Council, has many residents who are in the county in Tuscaloosa and Locust Hill. That entire, or those two developments are served by the utility board. So it'd be interesting to see what the customer breakdown is of municipal residents versus county residents. And I don't think we've done that before.
We have no representation on that board from my area, but.
Well, and then it all gets.
It's a goal that we can work toward, I hope.
And all that the utility board approves or wants to move forward on has to be approved by the Charleston City Council, which in some ways does not represent, in many ways, does not represent all the ratepayers of the combined utility board.
As a, the only commission that's a former PSD member, nothing is Charleston, we represent the county. They have done a far better job looking out for ratepayers over the decades than PSD ever did. So just speaking as, from experience as a ratepayer, I have full faith in them looking out. And there's a lot of layers of protection for ratepayers now. From here to three people, if they know something about three individuals that we may not, they can push them out and ask for new ones. So the layer of protection for ratepayers is far exceeding whatever existed before.
Well, and I think we have to recognize also that before, the Public Service District only had 2,500 ratepayers. City of Charleston Utility Board has, what, 6,000?
Probably more than that.
About six, maybe, yeah, more than that. So, you know, it's a, it is a matter of fair equity, and I get that. But it's still, you know, it's just, I don't think the representation is adequate, and we'll have to work toward that for the future.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I was just going to call for a question.
There's a reason developers and everybody fought it to the Supreme Court, so naturally, they didn't want it to happen, and the ratepayers did. So I think it's a good thing, so. Representation otherwise, but.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So maybe that four on Wednesday. Okay, very good. So let's go back to, we're at 10:15. Nick Deal, item number two. I think Nick is here. He's going to review the Jefferson County Development Authority's mission this morning. Morning, Nick.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Aye.
Thank you very much for having me. Got a little slideshow for you.
Arctic flash. An Arctic slideshow.
Oh, it's going to be freezing now, Jane. What are you doing?
It is. I've got my heater down.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize.
Is that your heater or is that taxpayer heater? Can we?
It's my heater that I brought.
It's giving you a hard time.
Taxpayer electricity.
Yes, you're right.
Exactly, right.
I'll put a tin on the table.
Just private libraries. Well, I wanted to, after the last meeting, I sat through and listened to the interviews from all the folks that wanted to be on the board, and I became concerned that some people might not exactly understand what we do. It's a, it is a little, sometimes it can be, I say complicated. It's not really complicated. It's just West Virginia and county code determines what we do. And so if you, the slide up there, and I'm actually going to read this verbatim, just so I don't mess it up, but the, as you all know, we were established in 1979 through West Virginia and county code to promote, develop, and advance the business opportunity and economic welfare of Jefferson County, its citizens, and its industrial complex. We work to increase and diversify the tax base in Jefferson County through expansion and retention of local businesses and through attracting new companies. Next slide, please. How we fulfill our mandate, excuse me. We fill our mandate using programs and incentives created through West Virginia statute. We can only use what tools we have in our toolbox. We, each year, we talk to our elected officials and encourage them to create new programs. We like to see incentives for small business. We like to see incentives, more incentives for tourism destination-related businesses. Those are few and far between right now, but we recognize there's a void there, and we've been trying to work on that. So next slide, please. Here's some examples of some of the tools that we have in our toolbox. Corporate headquarters credit. So if a company comes to West Virginia, and they have a corporate headquarters here, and they employ, create more than 15 new jobs. They can utilize the tax credit. Economic opportunity credit is for hiring a certain number of employees when you create a new, new jobs here. Next slide, please. Freedport Amendment, manufacturing investment credit, manufacturing sales tax exemption. These are all primarily manufacturing and industry credits.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Can this all be available to the public?
Yeah. And as a matter of fact, this is available on our website, and it's also available on the West Virginia Department of Commerce website.
This economic opportunity credit. Can you explain that?
Yes. Those are credits typically, the, what I'll say, the, there's some good incentives if you employ more than 20 people, but there are incentives for employing more than 10 people. I did not get into the specifics on here, and you can read all those specifics. But the jobs have to be a, they have to be at or above the median wage. It's got to be higher. That's non-farm payroll jobs. And they're typically jobs that pay a certain, certain amount of money. They have to have full benefits, has to be full-time jobs. And that's a tax credit for corporate income tax and personal income tax through that investment.
So that, that does not, that would be anywhere in the state.
That's correct. Yeah, these are all state incentives. The only, the only program that's really more of a county incentive, I am reluctant to even say the word, but pilot agreements are at the behest of the county. Everything else is, these are all state incentives. So, next slide, please. So these three, the Freedport Amendment, that's a, because, you know, we do have the, our property tax, our, and our inventory tax. It's a problem in West Virginia. We've continued to try to work on that. But Freedport Amendment allows that not to be, not to hit companies as hard as it would otherwise. Manufacturing investment credit and the sales tax exemption, when they're purchasing their materials and things for construction, things like that, are all manufacturing credits. Okay, next slide. We have direct loan programs, industrial revenue bonds, governor's guaranteed workforce programs. These are, these are all programs available to any company. But I say any company, the reality is, they're, in most cases, the only one there's a little wiggle room on typically is the governor's guaranteed workforce program, where a company, whether it's a small business or a large business, can recoup up to half of the cost, in some cases 25%, but usually up to half the cost of training an employee for a specific job. So for example. up to half the cost of training an employee for a specific job. So for example, if a company gets a new computer system and they have to train everybody how to use it, and they've got $50,000 in training costs for that, there are caps on... there are caveats to all these things, but the... there's... they can... they can recoup about half of that cost depending on the number of employees they're training. And so that's a pretty neat program, and several companies in Jefferson County utilize that. So those are some of the tools in our toolbox. So next slide, please. Here's our current focus. This is what I was hired to do. I've been here since November of 2017, and I was hired to focus on small business, advanced light manufacturing, technology and healthcare, tourism, and food industries. Those are the things I've been focusing on. That's what I've been doing since I started. So next slide, please. So this gives you an idea of the inflow and outflow of primary jobs in Jefferson County. These, in my mind, these are disturbing numbers. Over half of the workforce that works in Jefferson County comes here from out of county, and I'm going to talk a little more about that in a few minutes. And 70% of our workforce leaves Jefferson County every day. And so that's a... that is certainly... those are both white collar and blue collar jobs that leave Jefferson County every day. So next slide, please. We know... we not only have the longest commute time in the state, you can't really see it real, but it's 38.08 minutes. That's average commute time. That's a long... that's average.
Is that round trip or one way?
It's one way. It's round trip. I'm sorry, it's one way, but that's a... round trip is, what, over an hour? And so you figure that those commute times are longer than not... they're the longest in the state, and they're also longer than most of the counties around the DC Baltimore metro area. So that's a significant commute time. And so those are cars leaving our county every day. So, next slide, please. So these are two leading industries. Our primary industries are retail and hospitality, and while they are desperately needed to diversify our tax base, most of the workers in those jobs come from out of county because they can't afford to live here and so... and make those wages. And we'll talk a little more about those wages in just a minute. So next slide. Here are some observations about workforce. Average hourly wage for manufacturing is 21.16 an hour, and typically those jobs are full-time, full benefits. Average hourly wage for retail... now, these are full-time jobs in retail. These are not part-time jobs. Average hourly job wage in retail is $12.13, with 70% of our workforce traveling out of the county primarily for better-paying jobs. There are skilled workers who live here and want to be... and would like to work closer to home. We have about 1,900 people in Jefferson County that work in manufacturing, but there are only 600 manufacturing jobs, 634 at last report, manufacturing jobs in Jefferson County, which means 2/3 of those workers leave Jefferson County every day to go to work, typically in the DC Beltway area. Some of them go to Berkeley County. It just depends. The...
Can I ask a question about that 21.16 number? Is that... are those in-county jobs? That number is in-county, or is that everyone who's working in manufacturing?
That's a national... that's a national average.
National average, okay.
So is the 12.13 the national average also for retail?
Now, I'll tell you, the reason I didn't use the average in the... because we are in the DC metro area, those wages are higher in the DC metro area, and I don't think it's fair to compare the DC metro area wages to our wages because it's a little skewed, because obviously the closer you get to DC, the higher those wages are. And I also didn't think it was fair to use the Region 7 Workforce Investment Board numbers, because those numbers are a little skewed, because you've got... you've got five of the eight counties that are in the lower part of the eastern panhandle and pay significantly less than we do. So that's why I used a national average instead. I just thought that was a better... a better measure. The... one of the things that is a bit... that stresses me out a little bit is that we actually lost jobs last year in Jefferson County. We've... I've heard a lot of people say, well, we have a low unemployment rate, we don't need jobs. Well, here's how unemployment rates are calculated. Unemployment rates calculated, they don't really care where you work. Anybody in the county that is a job seeker or is job-ready, is some of the terms they use there, if those folks are working, then they're counted as working, and if they're not working, then they're not. So we have very few people, and we also have the highest workforce participation rate in the state, which is actually a really nice thing, because in southern West Virginia, you hear a lot of talk about the low workforce... the workforce participation rate in southern West Virginia, in some cases, is like 50%, which is terrible number. Here, most of our folks that can work do work, and so those are good numbers.
One quick thing. So, yeah, I always hear the low unemployment rate, but you never hear underemployment. What part of the county is actually underemployed, even though they're still working? And that ties into retail and food services, they're probably underemployed. What's that percentage is what I'm more concerned about.
I didn't... that's a very good question. I did not dig into that, and I don't have specific numbers for you here. I have them, and I can get them for you, but we do have a problem with underemployment. But the reality is that most of our workforce leaves the county every day, and they're not really underemployed. They're making good money, but they're making it somewhere besides Jefferson County. And so one of the things that has bothered me since I took this job is that we do not have enough living wage jobs for Jefferson Countyans to be able to work and live in the same county. And I think it's time that we took that into consideration so that people that live here can work here and still provide for their families.
To that point, not everybody in the county is lucky enough to have a federal government job or to work in the DC suburbs. I mean, a lot of us are granted, but a lot of us do not, and we need to factor that in, too.
Yes, and... but the reality is, is there are very few blue-collar jobs that pay a living wage in Jefferson... there are some, but there are a few blue-collar jobs that pay a living wage in Jefferson County, whereas just one county over, there's loads of them. And so that's something to consider, that we try to keep in consideration as well. So, that being said, next slide, please. What I did is I looked at our... I looked at our board makeup, and I also looked at West Virginia code, and I looked at the... and I looked... you all had determined 15 would be an optimal number of board members for our board. So let me go through this list for you. Next slide, please. So we need a representative from the county commission, we need one of those. Next slide. You have to have five representatives from municipality. Next slide. You need one from labor. Next slide. You need at least... I put two from industry, honestly. I did... I did a survey of six other development authorities around the state. This is not a scientific survey, but they all have at least... at least eight or 10, but I said two, just for our purposes. Next slide. One representative from business. Next slide. And a representative from education, and then a representative from higher education. That's 12... that's 12 members of our board, so that's 12 members that are mandated to be members of the board. Now, that being said, you have three slots left there, and based on what I told you before about our focus and what we've been... what we have been working on, that is advanced light manufacturing. And I'd like to say for the record, there... I was not hired to focus on heavy manufacturing. I have never focused on heavy manufacturing. I've never talked to companies that are heavy manufacturers. I've had some inquiries and turned them down. And so I understand, and I have heard loud and clear, that that's not what we need in Jefferson County. And so that's never going to be a focus as long as I'm in this job. So I just wanted to make that clear upfront.
Credit, when you first interviewed, that you said that was not your focus. You said other things, tourism, et cetera. I recall that, so.
And that's... and I just don't feel like... I feel like that while we certainly can utilize what we already have here, I think that going forward, we need to focus in areas that are going to be more friendly to Jefferson County. There are three... there are three other spots, and I have some recommendations for those. It's just recommendations. You all can do what you want, but... next slide. So I'd recommend we put somebody from healthcare in there, since we do focus on healthcare innovation and technology. I think it'd be good to have somebody that's a member of healthcare in that group. Next slide. Somebody from agriculture and for food. We have worked hard on agriculture and food industry. Not... we don't focus on farming. We recognize farming is critical to Jefferson County. We recognize it as part of the culture here, and we recognize that it has a big impact in the county. But what we've been focusing on, we've been focusing on ways to help farmers take what they have and generate some... generate more revenue than they would just by selling it in bulk. So we'd love to find food processors, people like that, that are... that would be able to take that... take those fruits and vegetables and make them into something else. And so those are the kinds of things that we've been focusing on. I think it's good to have somebody like that on our board. And then the last one, next slide, please, would be a representative from tourism, because now... and just to clarify, we don't focus on... we don't focus on tourism in general. We focus on tourism destinations. So if we have a... something that's going to be a tourism destination, it's going to bring more people to the county so they can spend their tax dollar... they can spend their money here, generate some tax dollars, and then they leave, we're fine with that, too. So we think that's a win-win for everybody. So that's the... that's 15 people. It is, again, within your purview to do... purview to do whatever you want to appoint those folks outside of the requirements that we have in West Virginia and in county code. I ask that... my ask from you is that you consider reconstituting our board, giving us a fresh start, so we can continue our efforts to build a tax base, create living wage jobs in Jefferson County. I ask you to appoint individuals, regardless their opinions about what has happened in the past with this board, because that stuff is in the past. I ask that you... that you appoint people that fully embrace our core mission, which was predetermined by county and state code, so that we can focus on business growth, job growth, and increasing the tax base in Jefferson County.
Just a question is, currently, there's how many people still on the board?
There are currently nine people on the board.
And they make up which groups on here?
See, you have a county commissioner on there. We have one... do we just have one municipality right now? Two municipalities? No, we have Harpers Ferry.
Harpers Ferry.
So we have two of those. We have somebody from agriculture. We actually have two from healthcare. We have... we have one from education, not higher education, but we do have one from education. And let me think, who else we got there? Who else is on... I'm trying to think of who else I'm missing there. We have one from real estate, so I guess you could call that business. We... we don't have anybody right now from industry or labor, and we... those really are... Yeah. And industry is really our... we desperately... I'd love to have some businesses that are actually in our industrial park that would... that would be involved, so. And we've got, you know, I think that we have an opportunity for a fresh start here, and we have an opportunity to begin anew with a new board. We can... and I think that we can begin attracting the right kinds of companies to Jefferson County again, given a chance.
Commissioner Tad, did you have anything else?
Yes, I did, and it was about your previous slides, and you talked about the different tools that were available, some of the different programs. Something I've learned recently is, I think I've got the right term, called an economic opportunity zone. What can you tell me about that?
We have... one of the things that I did when the... when the Department of Commerce started a conversation about opportunity zones is I actually went to Charleston, talked to the folks at Department of Commerce, explained to them, you know, how much it would help us to develop Jefferson County. That opportunity zone... so an opportunity zone is an area. It's determined through the federal regulations that determine where these opportunity zones are. They are... we applied for five of them. We are the... I think we're the only county in the state that actually has five opportunity zones, and we... I was given everything I asked for, which I was surprised about, but we were... those opportunity zones, so people can invest in an opportunity fund. Let's just say that you have a business that you sold... that you bought the business for $200,000, you ended up selling it for $1 million, you got $800,000, and that you profited from the sale of that business, and typically you'd be paying taxes on that. You can invest that money into an opportunity fund, and as long as the money in those opportunity funds are used in opportunity zones, then that money can potentially, over a course of time, and I'm not an accountant, so those that are accountants can probably speak this better than me, they are... they can ultimately be tax-free with majority of that money. So it can save quite a bit of money for large investors specifically. And so we thought it would be good for tourism destination businesses. We thought it would be good for other types of businesses that are investing large sums of money. Plus, we thought it might be able to help utilize some investment dollars to do projects in Jefferson County. And so we have these zones. Actually, the majority of the county, frankly, is in one of the zones. Now, I say the majority of the county. Most of them are really this way and across Jefferson County and south. There's... we... I did not apply for one in the Shepherdstown area, just because there was not really a place for more development in that area. And they... these funds, it's real... the way that you can spend money for these... in these zones is relatively flexible, so we thought it would be a real win for Jefferson County to do that. Now, the next part of that is attracting new investment into the county. And honestly, right now, regardless of what anybody's opinion is on what's going on, it's difficult to attract new investors into the county right now because they're a little nervous about what's happening. And so I think that ultimately, though, it'll be a... I think it'll be a win for Jefferson County.
So tell me, what's the next step? You get, you know, you get investors to put their money in this economic opportunity fund, then who decides how the money is spent, and who gets... what's the rate of return to the investors? I mean...
Well, so typically, the way this happens is... now, I'm going to use a real simple example.
That's what I need.
It gets much more complicated, but a real simple example is, let's just say that Nouse Foods, which is now up in, I think, in Pennsylvania. Nouse Foods decides they're going to sell one of their plants in Pennsylvania because it's old and it's going to cost too much to renovate, to bring it up to code again, and they're not sure what to do with it. And so they closed down an apple juice plant, and they sell that property. They bought it for $100,000 40 years ago. They sold it for $5 million bucks, and they got a bunch of money that they're gonna... that they're either going to be paying taxes on, or they can put it into a fund.
Right.
So they put it into one of these funds, and let's just say they put, you know, $4.9 million in a... in an opportunity fund. They take that $4.9 million and invest it in a new apple juice plant in Jefferson County. They keep that plant here for... well, there's five, seven, and then 10 years, but they keep the plant here, let's say, for 10 years, and ultimately, they're not... they're paying very little tax on that gain that they got from selling the old building.
So the investors that put the money in the fund make the decision of how it's spent?
That is correct. Now, what's...
Within the economic opportunity location.
Right. They have to be in a zone.
Right.
But what's happening now is there are funds being created by multiple investors, and they're actually looking for investments. And so they might be able to... let's just say you have an idea for a... for a movie theater in Jefferson County, and you say, "Well, I've got a half a million dollars, but this movie theater is going to cost $2 million."
Right, and you get a group together.
And we know that you could probably attract quite a bit of business here, and you do all... you do all your studies on that and realize it can generate some revenue. So you go to one of these opportunity fund groups and say, "Hey, are you interested in investing $1.5 million?" You'd either be part owners in the movie complex, or we would take it out as a loan, and we would pay you back at a certain percent interest, which would still be lower for you than a bank would be.
And so that all would work through the department authority? I mean, you would be the manager of that, or that's...
All we do...
You just maybe get people together and...
All we do is advertise that.
Okay.
We... we let people know. Our job is to let groups know that we have these opportunity zones in Jefferson County and try to encourage them to consider Jefferson County for locating whatever project they might have.
Okay, all right, I got you.
That's how those work.
Does that obey federal corporate tax and state, or just...
Federal.
It's just federal. State's still... it's not part of state.
No.
The state of West Virginia is still going to take a cut out of that regardless.
Well, it depends on... yeah.
It just... we don't have to go into it, but just...
Yeah. It depends.
One last thing. I know we're not talking about JCDAs appointments, and there's a lot of concern about removing board members. Just so everybody knows, I think the majority of the citizen board members are going to have to reapply next month regardless, because their terms are going to be up. So just so everybody knows.
I think that's only two of them.
I think it's three of the four, actually.
No.
So just... just everybody for information purposes.
I'll have to look at my list again. I thought it was only two. I'll have to look at my list again, I thought it was only two.
But what I, my concern is that, you know, we had, we got 35 people that wanted to interview, two of them were union, so that's down to 31. You're talking about just putting them in one position?
Again, I didn't, I didn't determine what those-
But from your list here, it looks like it would only be, they'd only qualify for one slot.
Well, you've got, I mean, I think that you can utilize your municipalities to fill some of those. I think you can, you know, for example, I know that Shepherdstown, for example, hasn't given you all any names yet of people that might be interested to be on board, and if you've got people that, that are part of that group that are, that live in Shepherdstown, then they would qualify as a Shepherdstown representative if you can get the municipalities to agree to put them on as a referral.
I understand, but that gives us six public members from municipalities and only one from the county.
There's, there's five municipalities.
All five?
Yeah, and then one from, one from the county.
And just one citizen from the county, other than what you have listed there.
Yeah, I'm, I don't disagree with you, I think there's actually three slots you could utilize for citizens from the county, it would just be nice if they had a background in either healthcare, ag, or tourism.
Well, I mean, so you'd have to re-advertise to get that, but none of these people thought of that, because I advertised and did not do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's probably going to be a good idea, because, I mean, again, most of these are, are required in state and county code. And so, it might be a good idea to rethink the whole thing, re-advertise, I wouldn't make people who've already applied and come up and talked to you, redo that again, but you can certainly keep them as part of that pool. And, and I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised at how many folks in industry business and in higher education that you'll, applications that you'll get to.
Here's the thing, I think way back when the majority voted to shrink the board, I mean, Commissioner Lawrence Eddy did not agree to that, that was one of my concerns, that it would weed out maybe just regular old citizens.
Right.
And it looks like that may have happened, so that's why I did not agree to shrink the board.
Well, and I, I think that, you know, I think, I think we'll have a good list, I think we'll have a good list of candidates that, qualified candidates actually, to serve on the development authority at some point. So, those are things that we do need to talk about and we will talk about those at a subsequent meeting once we decide to, to hold a special meeting and, and find the process and make it, make it more understandable, so.
We have to decide if we're going to have a special meeting first.
We do, yeah.
And because the budget is coming up and everything also, so.
We do, that's right.
Can I just talk about the inventory tax, taking it back, because I know there's been, you know, I've heard some comments that the state should get rid of it if it doesn't make us competitive, and I think the state has tried for the last several years to get rid of it. The problem is, is that, we're certainly collecting taxes on inventory, we do have some, but for the southern counties, it's their bread and butter.
Yeah, I was gonna-
It would decimate those southern counties to get rid of the inventory tax, so any tax reform they have put forth ends up harming counties like Jefferson County and we're losing money to make up for that inventory tax that they're getting rid of in the southern counties, which is really, I mean, we get most of our tax revenue from, from actual real estate tax, whereas the southern counties are getting most of their taxes from the inventory tax, and that's why it's been so problematic in West Virginia to get rid of that inventory tax because of those southern counties that are getting, that's where they're getting any of their money to operate most of it.
And it's, and it's a big number, I mean, it's, in Jefferson County, less than 2% of your revenue comes from inventory tax. The average in West Virginia is 8%, but some counties in southern West Virginia, it's 20 or 30% of their revenue.
And so, whenever they do, I mean, we were opposed to the last tax reform bill because it was essentially going to raise our levy rate just to collect the same amount of taxes so the people here would be paying more to get the same level of service, and the reason they were doing that is they're trying to make up for that loss in the southern counties. So, it is true that jurisdictions surrounding us do not have that inventory tax, but it's problematic and the legislature has been trying to craft a solution for several years to get rid of it, but they haven't been able to do that so that they're not harming some county, well, you know, completely decimating southern counties that are already struggling financially or taking it away from other counties that also need the revenue. So, I just wanted to mention that that is the struggle that's going on in, in West Virginia and that's why it's been so problematic to get rid of that inventory tax.
That's a concern long-term too, as the state loses population, that they're going to start looking at the areas that-
Yeah.
For lack of a better term, are more affluent and pulling more dollars from those areas. It's a recipe for disaster, but.
You're right.
Yeah. Any other questions? That, that kind of history lesson.
Any other questions or comments for Nick? Thanks, Nick, thanks for appreciating.
You all very much for your time.
Okay. All right, we are going to take a break and we'll be back in 15 minutes.